Everybody hear me? Meeting to order, September 3rd, 2025, roll call. Kevin?
Present.
Kristi?
Yes.
Andrew?
Present.
Uh, what's approval for last month's meeting minutes? Kevin makes motion?
Second.
Kristi, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of last month's financial report? Kevin makes motion?
Second.
Second by Kristi. All those in favor? There's no claims for this month? So we will turn it over to you, sir.
No claims?
No claims.
Alright. Can everybody hear me okay? Sure. Sure.
Yeah. I'd like to know who's out there and he's. What special you already given out?
Alright.
Do you?
Do you guys want to go ahead?
Entertain, board president. You or not them?
Alright, go ahead.
Kevin Hendrickson, vice president.
Can you stand up and say it so we know you are through people? My name is Kristi Howell. I am a board member.
Kristi, head.
Entertain, board president. Kevin Hendrickson on the vice president's board.
Hey. Jacob Bowman, I'm the legal counsel.
Your question.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff.
Good. Okay, um, so, can everybody hear me okay? Alright, if, if, if in this conversation you have trouble hearing me, let me know. I'll do my best to speak up. As all of you probably know by now, these meetings are live streamed and recorded. I do my best to post the recording the next day at some point, um, whether it's at eight in the morning, whether it's at five at night, I, I don't know. It's just really when I get to it. But this meeting will be posted tomorrow, uh, on, on the, on the YouTube page and.
YouTube, that's China?
Okay.
One of them's here.
Alright.
Listen, everyone, please, we're, we're not being rude or anything else. Please keep this civil. Okay?
Yeah.
I apologize.
Alright, thank you.
Nope. Okay. Um, so a, as again, as all of you know, these meetings are live streamed. You can go back and listen to the recordings from the last two public hearings, which were on August 14th and August 28th. Uh, feel free to look at the YouTube page if you need to know where the YouTube page is. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know the handle right now, but I will get it to you after this meeting concludes. Um, so tonight, there are a couple of things that we need to address. Again, as all of you know, uh, the board last week, uh, had passed a resolution making a preliminary determination to issue bonds in the amount not exceeding $12.7 million, okay? We have not yet issued the notice of the preliminary determination to the clerk, nor have we published the preliminary determination with the paper. Why that's important is really because we have heard the comments from each of you, whether that's via social media, whether that's you coming to the public hearing, which thank you for coming. We are reevaluating the position with respect to the bond issuance. So, so the clerk, if you are submitting a referendum, for example, or you plan to submit a petition for referendum, the clerk will not have received our notice for that because we are still evaluating ways that we can reduce the costs. Uh, still hopefully construct a new firehouse with the bond proceeds, but reduce the cost to do so based on the conversations we've had with all of you. So with that said, a board consensus would be essentially, you don't have to make a motion, but to confirm that you're okay with me not sending the notice of preliminary determination for publication with the newspaper and okay with me not sending that to the clerk.
Yes.
Okay. Any, any comment from the board on that?
I do have, we heard your concerns when you were addressing. I have a question.
Hold, hold on, so, so because there's a lot of you tonight, I'm going to recommend, okay, because there's a lot of you tonight, I'm going to recommend that the board allow an opportunity for public comment after we conclude, uh, or at the conclusion of our meeting.
Sir, I'm the one that hosted the meeting because you all got it in a false email yesterday. You all are here because I corrected that. I'm the chief of the department. And I wanted to make sure that we were totally transparent, so sir, please let these people talk and quit interrupting them. Because the only reason you know about this meeting tonight is because of me. Alright?
I appreciate that.
Because I didn't want to be doing it with any other names.
Please continue. I accept that.
But I didn't want to be called any more names and slander.
Call your name. I accept that.
Plenty other people had. Here was one. Every text was both ways.
Oh, oh.
Hey, let them finish. This is not, it's not the first meeting. It was not the third one. I'm just saying, I hosted it so you all can be here tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, so, thank you, Josh.
So, um, with that said, again, we're pausing the bond issuance while we reevaluate other options for building and construction of the project. We've already been in communication with several other units of government around the state with regards to who they used for their architect, engineer, and construction manager, what their anticipated costs were, what their actual costs ended up being for construction. And we're going to reevaluate, the reevaluation of the determination to issue bonds will come with even more opportunities for you all to place your input, uh, or put an input forward. So, so with that said, um, there's no other business to be conducted with regards to the bond issuance at this time, okay? You all will receive other notices in the event we decide to move forward with the project if we can get better cost estimates, um, for the construction. Okay? Um, with that said, uh, I did have, while, while I'm on this, um, Andrew, uh, last meeting, I did present an additional, uh, agreement for my services related to things outside the bond issuance, meaning contract negotiation with the architect, engineer, et cetera, bidding, more or less, uh, acting as local counsel for the board as opposed to local counsel for the board on the bond issuance. The scope of the contract is the same as I presented last week. Um, and I'd ask that you approve that this evening so I can communicate, so I can communicate with the state board of accounts with respect to my representation.
Need to section my word. I have a motion to a bird. Don't pay much. Could excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carried.
Okay. Um, the last bit, uh, as I mentioned, I, I still think it's appropriate for the board to allow the public to speak with respect to the construction and the bond issuance, which again is put on hold for now. But how we are all here, I would, I would recommend you give them an opportunity to state their first and last name, state their address, uh, and address some questions. Now, we do have a lot of people here. I would recommend, again, that you allow comments, but keep them to about three minutes if you can.
Okay. Alright, we're open for public comments. Comments less than three minutes.
My name is Charlotte, born eleven three ninety-eight West Lakeside Drive. Also a member of the Prince Lake County Council, but I have not represented that because we have not discussed this. But, uh, I'm sad. It's so much. Because in 2012, our bill built theirs by day for 2.5 minutes. And Taylorsville did theirs seven or eight years ago for less than two minutes. Edinburgh did theirs. They got four drive-through bays. They could put eight vehicles in. They got the rooms, the showers, and your dining and all this stuff. And their speedway delay was 2.8. For $11 million, you're building a frigging top of a hall, which I'd say is sad and bad that you're screaming everybody here. You know, I hate to use that language, but you are. You're taking funds away from people and can't afford it. And we're going to the extension with a budget because it's, it's that much money. If you were to say, if you were to say in forty-six, I don't think you'd have a problem. They're going $11 million? Now, that's recovered. That's recovered.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
George Adams, thirty-five East seventy-seven South. At the last meeting, we were asked to give our emails so that we could be kept up our breath on these meetings. I provided my email. I received an email telling me the next meeting was September twentieth of seven. I just realized that email was from you. Why did I receive that email telling me about a meeting on Saturday evening? Why did I not receive an email telling me about this meeting tonight? You guys told us bold-faced. You're not trying to do this in the dark. You're not trying to keep it from us. How am I not to believe that?
Thank you, sir.
That's how the email says, but I'm not going to argue.
Open four, seven nine five five South Ulake Drive. Hit it really quick. You have something to say today? Minerva and Henson Township combined. So what impact does this have on this? Obviously, you must have known this was going to happen. So what, what's going on?
Jacob, are we supposed to respond to questions or follow up?
I don't think a response.
The answer, no. You know, it's much. If it's hurting me. So I. I find that some neighbors. Not trusting.
We're well tired, partner. To choose houses or vehicles combined.
I, I.
The bunches combined.
I would say at this point, we're not going to answer questions.
Has anyone bothered to take a survey of how many people are retired in this entire community? Even one rate of taxes, seven hundred more dollars a year on fixed income? Have you ever bothered to do a survey? Find out how many retired people are here or close seventy-five, eighty years old, if they're in the forties? What are you going to do about that? Just say, too bad, you're going to have to take money out of life? That'd be, and this is our opportunity to take care of what one day.
Sir, my, I was probably just getting down to nine things, but it must help you. I think a lot of this issue could have been resolved, get some proper studies done. And look at the facts of it and look at what this community should complain. Going forward, I think this one is going to resolve everybody. But I'd like to know the one thing that I did. That's really, can't expect today.
Yes, sir.
Albert, excuse me, three ninety-seven South, one twenty-five West. I'm retired state police and my dad was a firefighter. I would like to know how you came up with the $12 million firehouse. I would too, just from the volunteer department. Are you planning on going full-time and that's why you need seven bedrooms or that much stuff? And why do we need a, a big meeting, birthday parties and stuff like this? It's a firehouse, not a community service. A community, uh, house, whatever, it's not over. Those are my concerns. I mean, I pay taxes. I've done bills both sides. But $12 million is way too much for a firehouse.
There.
With community.
Sorry. I couldn't wait. I don't think anybody here denies that a new firehouse would be great.
Yes.
We, I think it'd be great, but this budget is totally ridiculous. Seals steward eight five fifty South in Nevada. Um, we, I appreciate you reevaluating it and looking at other possibilities. I mean, I, I just, I, I would like to see a new fire department and building and a good representation of our township, but $12 million is just a little catch me.
My name is Brenda Clark, six nine six, Angelina Frank's in court, Minerva. I have a question for the fire chief, if that's okay. How many firemen do you make a year?
Around six hundred.
Around six hundred. Real fires?
No. But we also run EMS.
I'm just talking about fires.
Yeah, you know, on EMS. Get straight.
Just, just for fires.
I would have to go with full reference. Uh, I can tell you, it drives fires. It lasted one and a half. That was, they were safe to the neighbor's house from burning down. So because it was in the very backside of the lake, the low water pressure. And it was, we did save the neighboring house. They only damaged any majors with a melted siding on the third row.
And how soon are you going to get to me? Uh, one of your EMTs that will be certified in ALS?
We, that is a big step to jump up to advanced life support. We actually have paramedics that work here. They just can't function as paramedics.
Because?
We're not ALS certified.
Because?
Well, equipment for the monitor alone is $40,000. We're just one piece of equipment. It's not in our budget.
You talking about the D-kid related?
I'm talking about the monitor, yes.
D-kid related, yeah.
Yes. And then just the drugs to go with it and in order to be through paramedic, there has to be a paramedic working 24 hours a day, seven days a week to be full ALS. So like Edinburgh goes in and out of ALS, will run BLS ambulance. And then when they have medics working, they run a ALS ambulance.
But I, I would still be anxious to know just how many fires because obviously this is going to be more fire department than.
Fire service today is about eighty percent EMS call. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Brenda.
Seventy-five South, seventy-seven eighty, three houses up from here. I am retired. My buying power has dropped by at least fifty percent since in the last four years. How in the world am I supposed to afford more taxes? First off, what, what are the benefits for my family? And why in the world isn't this in the referendum somewhere where we can show them?
Any other public comment?
Hi. My name is Paul Sanders. I live at seventy-eight fifty South Ulake Drive. We have been in this community for less than eight years, so I hope that you guys leave it though. But I do know though, is that you guys will look your butts off and we thank you for that. But also, we do believe that you probably do need a new firehouse. This is, I'm sure at times difficult. No one here is going to be, probably disagree with that. What I would like to know is now that we have a step that you just took today on the, on the, um, on the bond, what will be your next step after this? When the bond is not ready. Set, okay, or what's requested? And then also, what, do you have like, uh, besides YouTube, is there a formal site where information can be shared with public or can you transfer back and forth on the public team? Is that, is that something that we could possibly, yeah? Or input could be by a little less bullshit? You know, people just kind of just give you input and you can give us feedback back for where you are, what you're thinking about, your, your steps to try, the stuff that didn't work, your step that when you reached out to other communities, that input that you got back from them, feature fire station plans? Any?
My grandfather, my grandfather in the fire department, I know it's needed. I understand that. Um, I lived here for a year, the life was born and raised here. And we're saying that this is going to progress into 2020. What have we been doing the last five years as a community to help you get where you need to be? Because there's no fish for eyes, no chili peppers, there's nothing. And those are the things that helped those other departments get to that point of building their own apartments. So we've kind of been sitting on those for five years and now it's coming to you. We need this much money and what happened? So it's give and take. We want to give to you, but you gotta, you gotta show us something that makes us a part of this.
There's plenty of taxes, but it doubled. And the council, or the gentleman council, they said, council had recommended only say half of that. But the state would have had to push through your, your tax rate to the maintenance. And it's an issue that they're trying to make smaller departments be a better funding. But with that extra funding to our, say, firehouse, how much money is currently in the pension? That should go towards building expenses.
That was a question.
You may address it? So, so, hold on. I, I cannot hear you now. So if you log on to, I'm going to tell you, you log on to the Indiana Gateway site. It's part of the Department of Local Government Finances. All of our financial reports have been reported to the state. You, you can pull up those financial reports of this district of Bargersville, of whoever you want, any taxing unit, and look at them. I don't have that number in front of me. Not the case. Yeah, so this is several financial statements that go onto the gateway system. Like.
Few people, where does it say in the posse and then things like this?
And, and I don't know the answer to it.
We're doing this, it's still underhanded. There's an open.
Thank you.
Those votes. If you somebody. Knowing that's going to be a part of where we ask.
You're the one that paid $12 million, but you're paying no time to try. You have right now. That's all we have to talk. That's real. And then. People have been making you fifteen years. They don't have to much. There's no difference between the money tax and the set tax. The set tax, you make where it wants you, but that's only the people who are making more money. There would be here with taxes. The set tax, you expect your interest rate. Do you have higher than you? You have higher taxes. Are you able to go with them?
Water bill went up too.
Oh, water bill is a pair.
Because if you're going to try to emerge, while I make this decision now, it could be sheltered on wider demographic. Why should we burn a dog's tire if they're getting ready to burn? Burn it last night. But it really, it's obvious they're burning up.
It seems to be a lot of market testing.
Yeah, it's just, it's just. Emergently, anyone who's emerged.
Harrison, eighty-four State District South. Now, sir, can you back me up on this? Hey, listen, if we get a petition together to have this put on the ballot as a referendum and there's more people vote against it than for it, doesn't?
Uh, about three years, roughly.
I would suggest you as a board, sit down, sharpen the pencils and get the number down where the people out here can take it instead of trying to cram something up their backside.
Is there anybody on the board of the fire department over these past five years that has the values to apply to the state or the federal government for any grants or any laundry, well, powers of faith, and you can pay it back that way?
We have not.
Why not? And then it's like, look at Grant and our public comments. Sir. It's never to hear you guys because I think a lot of people are wondering that. Fire Board?
Fire Protection District Board.
Okay. Are you appointed or are you elected?
Appointed.
Who are you appointed by?
Mr.
Mr. Okay, now we know.
Thank you. I can answer any of the questions now.
We have to open this up for policy.
Okay, and then if I don't answer?
Maybe.
Yeah, we're talking about thirty-seven, forty-seven South. I think we pretty much asked all the questions that everybody has, but I do want to stop. I want to thank Josh, everything he's done. I know this. Me and him are not exactly on the same page on this, but he took an hour the other day. Came down, I sat with him. He showed me the friends, went over things, explained things. Um, my fear is, is I, I agree that we don't need a $12 million fire station. What I'm worried about is the fire truck. Um, I think a twenty-year bond on a fire truck is the worst idea I've ever heard. I would never go buy a vehicle on a twenty-year loan. So I'm hoping that you guys give Josh the support that we need somehow. Find a fire truck, another way, even though this is going to set back. I mean, I think all of us here appreciate what these guys do for us.
Yeah.
I didn't want to give Josh the support. He's supported the community. He's briefed out. He's let every one of us know. He's corrected mistakes on meetings. Like the guy had been as transparent as he possibly could be. We wouldn't be here if he didn't let us know. So we need to support him with what we can do to get a fire truck and at least see if we can scrap the blueprint that's there and come up with a reasonable fire station, get this in the works instead of doing the referendum to push back three years. I think this community, we need to figure out some kind of compromise, put it together, get the same move.
Amen.
People to get together that actually have to come together for that for this. That's a thing that you guys are looking to set up a meeting with.
I didn't hear the first part of it, sorry.
Um, he was wondering if there was a way to get together, you know, the way to let the community brainstorm um, with you guys, different ways to achieve the goal that we're looking at. We need to bring the price down or bring the community in. If there's a way that can happen and if it could, be in the touch list to arrange that touch thing. That was his question and I'm just asking if it's possible, if it actually.
Oh. But we can't have three of you here if one of you wants to volunteer and I'll come down. I'm, I'm fine with meeting, meeting here without anybody and anybody who wants.
It's a possibility. There's legalities in that, that the board cannot be together for that meeting. Otherwise, it isn't a physical meeting, but yes, I can deal with it.
I was the first one to speak and I want to apologize for the one word I used that they have offended somebody when I said I was retarded. I apologize for using that word. It was a loose ground.
That's your apology.
Bill Harper, three forty-two East seventy-seven South. I don't know what the legal ramifications are, uh, what to do with its property. When it is a new fire station was built, but I think the four choice that deed is to acknowledge.
But I think the, the poor choice to deed this to a non-property, we don't need any more parks. We got a big park over in Johnson County, several hundred acres, a big park in the stretch of lakes. Uh, I like. If anyone does have, just install that and space value to put on those parks and buy equipment to restore them. Not a property that we just, but it's going to get wind down.
Any other public comment?
Yeah. David Epple, eighty-six, Los Angeles. Uh, my question is, these improvements, which much needed, uh, is there any goal to, to target, uh, improve our ISO PPC score that'll affect our fire insurance? If that'll offset any change that you proposed from these talks and.
Well, how long do we go? Any other public comment?
Don, you know, because you're behind me, south, you're really pushing me up. How did we decide most parts go within the design and then you build from them instead of building the design, you will build it up. We get it confirmed, but we don't get it built by contractor of the building, the design and contractor.
Rick Manlove, nine sixty-eight, went by our drive. Uh, if we can't get any answers tonight, why aren't we going to get? Do you quit? Do what?
We'll address some of them. I'll, I'll go back, we'll go back through, we'll try and answer as many as we can, noting that we don't have bond counsel and we don't have, uh, uh, municipal advisor here.
Are you writing the questions down?
Yeah.
I'm sure we go and I'm so misled and God. I can understand your reluctance to answer questions tonight. I was on the white light conservancy board. If I didn't have an answer for a question, I wasn't just going to throw something out there. So I appreciate that you would take the time to look at these folks and research, and be only going to do that to us with that information. I appreciate that you never feel it's not, I've been in a situation before.
I would like to say, if anything, from now on, it'll probably be on our next statement.
When did you stay in meeting?
So do we want to address that? So. Yeah, sorry. Hold on, so I, I, I don't know if I discussed this, but I do want to hold an executive session and a special meeting next Thursday. If we all have time on our calendars or sufficient for a quorum. So check them all. Yeah. So an executive session will not be, the special session will be, okay? So, so yes, you will have an opportunity. That's the hope, we'll address some of these questions. Let us check our calendars, give us a second. Charlie, you know better than anybody, we still have to publish notice, so we're all going to get it, so. I'll send you the notice. You're welcome.
Ma'am, paying for your course and with correct date and time.
We don't know yet. Hold on. So going back to special executive session, special meeting, are we available? Kevin, are you available next Thursday? The eleventh? Christie, are you available Thursday, the eleventh? Andrew? Well, I need two. So what time?
It was just one second.
One second.
I think there are one issue here.
Six o'clock? Six thirty, what do you want to do?
I can just.
Six? So we'll do a spe, uh, executive session at six, special meeting at six thirty? Okay, so, so everybody hears, next Thursday, September eleventh, we're going to have an executive session at six o'clock, followed by a special meeting, open to the public at six thirty. Hopefully at that time, we'll address some of the questions that you posed tonight, in addition to having further updates on the scope and the cost of the project, based on more discussion I'll have this week with architects and engineers.
It'll be here.
It'll be here. Sorry, it's the only place we have. The, the recommendation is to not publish the notice of the bond issuance, because we're going to reevaluate the cost of it. That, that is. So. So it's a fair question. So at the last public hearing, which was on the twenty-eighth, and I'm not sure if you were there. Okay, so at the last public hearing on the twenty-eighth, the board made a preliminary determination, so passed the resolution. But what we didn't do, and, and my recommendation to the board is to not do until we get, hopefully get these costs under control, is to start the clock on our time to issue the bond. So we're reevaluating, we might pass a different resolution, a new resolution lowering that cost. And then we'll publish notice, we'll give notice to the clerk, um, and that will start the time period for our bond to be issued from that.
Okay, and then my next question is, does anyone on this board have experience with like building contracts, funding as far as the government goes? And if not, is there a way that people who have that experience can assist?
Good question. I, I appreciate the.
What we can do to get free talk.
I appreciate that.
The motion you made last time.
Yeah, if it was twelve thousand seven hundred, I don't think we'd all be here right now. An amount not to exceed twelve point seven, yes. Correct. Correct, there's a little bit of wiggle room in that, but if it's a substantial change, I would recommend we have more public hearings, we have a new resolution, and we pass it on that number.
You're a. You're right. Sir.
As far as bill taking or building is building, you guys do the same as the state does and you'll request three bids?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think on the hand over to you.
Hello, David, seven seven four, Angelina Court. And my question is, um. I know it's true on the internet, but there's a rumor out there that Minerva, Vauger, Parkville, and Long River, all were drawn police, uh, fire departments. So why should we incur the cost of twelve million dollars to let someone else come in and run the fire department that's for our township?
As we discussed at the last meeting, those are all preliminary discussions that have been hit on the side of the state.
But they are happening.
Right. For as detailed as you can be, are you?
So if they merge their four fire departments, are we still going to be stuck paying for a twelve point three million dollar building? Or is everybody else in the county that's going to benefit from our fire department and our new equipment, are they going to pitch in their part to pay for this? It'd be my.
That's a hook, you know, if you do.
Hi, gender gender men, uh, still contract. And I don't know if this information is correct or not, it comes to you on the community involvement. Um, we see big buildings all across Johnson County, Marion County, and warehouses are renting, okay? And it's because of growth and those companies or corporations may or may not did their due diligence. Are we aware that there's three facilities at Camp Atterbury, which Minerva, I believe, is threatening? We support them with fire, but they have a camp at Atterbury, or if they have their fire. But they have three buildings of size, fire department buildings equipped for fire engines, so they're seeing big. With the government, federal government wanting to sell parcels, clean lines there, their expenditures, why is there a chance of you cannot locally for them and lease that building, buy that building and work with that? To use something that's already there, they get rewards, we get rewards. It's just an option to maybe use to be researched.
And who looks right to say this about, I'll do like both things.
Yeah, I know.
Are you currently contracted with architect and architect and engineer and did link possible and break those contracts? If you answer yes. He has legal. Are those contracts available to public? Do you?
Saying yes, okay.
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, you do.
Fifty-four forty-five south, win my blood. My question is, where did you come up with your now to not go up, what is wrong with that, the twelve million dollars out of his head? My second is, I watched my dad start a trip out, he started a fire, I didn't watch him, he started on fire, I didn't thought, but I watched how it got built. And then I watched the young man that took over and up and get what they're up today. I also watched Ammon rebuild their whole building, a little part at a time. Why can you not be something with this building and save some money? My dad is ninety-six years old with my mother, ninety-one, on a fixed duty account. They cannot really act these things like this. They really probably can't afford one at all, that's been happening. If everybody else in this community had built for under two million to make three million dollars, Minerva can too.
Last call for public comment. Big names? No further business?
That one, right?